Call the 12th way to the meeting, one city council to order, roll call that on clerk.
Council Baden, Council Kehoe.
President.
President, Council Pukana.
President.
President, Council Chakoudas. President, Council Luji.
President.
President, Council Frey.
President.
President, Council Sia.
President.
President, Council Ford. Assembly, Council Lozey.
President.
President, Council Net. President. President, Council Taman. President.
Just like to, uh, uh, learn from members that the council of Bart did contact here earlier today. Uh, it looks as though, uh, he and his, uh, his family, we've joined your addition. Family today, uh, we wish him a lot of luck, he wishes to be here. I think, uh, being in a, in a place where a good life is made in corned here, it's a solemn occasion, he's a great guy. So, he gives his regrets, but we think he's made the right decision tonight. If you all stand for a moment of silence, please. Please join me in the closing of the meetings.
The closing of the meetings to a high of the United States of America. Into a republic, which is a man, a nation, and a God. You will be miserable, for the reading of the law.
Motion to council of Luji to suspend the rules for the second. That's made the second, uh, of the CI, of the CI, that's happened, council of Luji.
I have a license card in the audience tonight. I'm Anthony, man, the safety in the, the music, uh, to that. And your talent, right here. I want to recognize Kathy Laker for her work, getting this kid to fly. Kathy, good job. We're not going to do it. I'm Anthony, I'm the singer, and top of the hits.
Everyone rise for the national anthem.
Oh, say. Can you see? By the long, early light. What so proudly we hailed? At the twilight's last gleaming. O' crows' stripes and bright stars, through the perilous skies. O'er the ramparts we watched, were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof of our might. Their flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner wave o'er the land of the free? And the home of the brave?
Um, rain down with the singing new, everybody else.
Thank you so much.
Remember those walls of steel? Remember that summer love? It didn't need to put up a fight. It would make the sound. Find a way to let you in. What I never really had in mind. In the light of your halo. I'm not going to doubt. It's like I've been awakened. Everyone has a break in their day. It's a real time saver. And they will both shut you out. Heaven looking down. I'm surrounded by your praise. Baby, I can feel your halo. I pray it won't fade away. Halo. I can feel your halo. Your halo. Your halo. You're everything I need and more. It's breaking all the ways. Baby, I can feel your halo. I pray it won't fade away. Halo. I can feel your halo. Thank you.
Um, the next song is going to be, I'll be there by Jackson Park.
You and I must make a pact. We must bring salvation back. Where there is love, I'll be there. I'll be showing my hand to you. I have faith in all you do. Just call my name, and I'll be there. I'll be there for you. From my world and dreams surround you. You know I'm so glad I found you. I'll be there with a love so strong. I'll be safe. You know I keep holding on. Yeah. I'll be there. You know I'll be there. Yeah, yeah. Just call my name, and I'll be there. Just look over your shoulders. Just call my name, and I'll be there. Thank you.
Uh, that's officially the best meeting we've had so far. Uh, man, boy, uh, I think I speak for the entire city. I know Mayor Fennec Kennedy's here, she was following you the entire time, and I knew you had a call on the 91. But, my gosh, congratulations, you're an amazing young girl, and I'm sure that one day we'll be paying tickets down in our auditorium to watch you sing. So just remember, you know, discounts, sometimes. TV guy, actually, you're right, you should have a cellular app, you'd be a TV guy, you're one of the big things. Congratulations, you're such a great. I'm going to give advice, while you're trying to close your phone, because you'll be here singing in front of us before everything's finished. But thank you very much. Let's have the motion for minutes. The minutes will last a moment for the last meeting. For communications.
We have a communication from Marana the mayor. Dear councilors, I hereby appoint you to Jake Wall, 24th Barris Road, Lynn, Massachusetts, as commissioner of public works. With the Lynn City Council's approval, I request that this appointment becomes effective on July 1st, 2014. Sincerely due to Fennec and Kennedy Mayor and the personnel committee, on May 20th, they honestly voted to send it out to the whole council.
This is going to require a roll call, so we'd like to have Mr. Hall in the audience come up, take a motion to approve. Motion made, second for discussion. Council Sia. Mr. Hall, if you'd like to join us, please introduce yourself to the city of Lynn for those folks who don't know you, you face many of them.
I want to introduce Andy.
You've met him.
Council, I want to thank you, Mayor, for this appointment. One of the few times I've really wanted to say hello. Andy is going to be a great asset for the city of Lynn. The water resource council for our town. Stream Women's sponsor. I love that. And he's going to be a great official for the city. Would that be said, Andy, you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you for, uh, putting your faith in me, and I look forward to it very well. You did a good job, and, uh, I'm sure.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Hall? Huh?
Yeah, we have to stop shouting.
Word of advice, do not get your cell phone number out at any council meeting, that private. So Hall, are you joined by, you joined by someone this afternoon, because we all know behind that good man is a great woman, so I believe that your wife is here as well, am I correct? Yes, or is it? You played the job to her. I think she understands. Any other comments or questions? Council Trum.
Hey, I'd just like to echo, Council Sia, this is a guy coming in here that, he's a man not about words at action. He will be out there and probably help people solve some of the streets, and he's right up there with us, with, uh, food, some concepts, and, uh, he's going to be a significant, uh, great asset for the city of Lynn. People are going to love his name.
Thank you, Council Trum. Council Lozey.
And I just want to say, as the water and sewer representative, I'm used to handing out accolades for the ending, and he's done a terrific job up there. We're going to miss him up at the water and sewer, but he's going to be a great asset for the city of Lynn. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Any other comments? Just remember to return, the mayor of all councils calls first. All right, seeing none, congratulations, Mr. Hall. First, for the second, another thing I want to do is do a roll call. That's what?
Council Baden, Council Kehoe.
Yes.
Yes, Council Pukana.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Council Luji.
Yes.
Yes, Council Frey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Taman.
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
Thank you.
We have another communication from Marana the mayor. Dear councilors, I hereby appoint Mr. Kennedy Newt to 261 Lynnfield Street to the constipation commission to replace this five-man, white, officious. The new term is effective immediately, will expire May 22nd, 27th. Basically, sorry, May 22nd, 27th. Sincerely due to Fennec and Kennedy Mayor and him another one as well, I think we got two or three of them. Dear councilors, I hereby appoint this Andy Ruff the same to the constipation commission to replace this five-man without Cameron. This saying's term is effective immediately, will expire May 7, 2019. Sincerely due to Fennec and Kennedy Mayor.
A motion to approve, you hear that? Motion made, second, uh, by May, that is Mr. Newt representing the audience here today. Seeing none, any further discussion, roll call.
Council Baden, Council Kehoe.
Yes.
Yes, Council Pukana.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Council Luji.
Yes.
Yes, Council Frey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Taman.
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
And we have another communication from Richard Wood, Chief Treasurer, advising the council that public property at Block 23, Wall Street, has been sold to Peter Supermazaeus in parcel 001, Liberty Street, 1290, and Carmen Mateo. Please adjust your records accordingly, you need to accept that.
Would you do accept the file? Motion made, Council Trum, second by Council Sia, those of you that have seen that, that's how it's done. Public hearings.
Chris Public Care is a public hearing on a home petition for an act of many, we have established, you have a common inspection services in the city of Lynn.
And open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please present to the podium. State your name clearly for the record, as well as your address.
Meeting Council Michael London, 58, St. Edward Road, and Chief of Inspection Services. And I wish to speak in favor of the home petition for reorganization of inspection services department. The inspection service department was created in 1999, implemented in 2004, and has been effective since 2000. But the cost of building is that the changes in the structure in due respect of the inspection services department, as well as changes in the way of the apartments and different communities perform their duties. This management reorganization plan is dependent to you in the effort to accommodate changes in operations and to increase departmental efficiency effectiveness and efficiency. Plan is to present to the Chamber of Commerce and the business partnership and support this reorganization. I would further like to mention that this management reorganization does not require any layoffs or deductions in force. Impact values are included, full values are included in the comment, and the reorganization does not increase any individual's compensation. This reorganization is organized so that the form of each division reflects function, and that ultimately each division has a management employee who is responsible for that division's operations. The inspection division will contain all aspects to increase operations, coordination, efficiency, along with continuous improvements, and increase response to residents' requests and business needs. Public health division will focus efforts on community health maintenance, grants, public health clinic, and facilities. Division will create to recognize the effects of the transfer of the facility and maintenance workers to the inspection services department. This division has become the commonest largest division with nine employees responsible for making this all possible. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, and I respectfully request your consideration in approving this inspection services department reorganization under the bench available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council? There's been a motion to approve by Council Ford, it's second by Council Trum. With that, discussion ensues. Discussion? Any discussion, see the discussion, roll call.
Council Baden, Council Kehoe.
Yes.
Yes, Council Pukana.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakoudas. Yes, Council Luji.
Yes.
Yes, Council Frey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Taman.
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
Thank you, I am delighted to state that the Lynn here, Chamber of Commerce, has sent over a letter of support that hits the chairman, Tasso, meeting the localists here earlier. Uh, I think he excellent states that performance, so I'll submit that also for the record. Council Frey, just surprising that, I also believe that Lynn Mrs. Pines shares some support as well, so I'd like that to be. Thank you, Council Frey, you are correct, I apologize if we don't have that before, and I did see that letter in the email, thank you for the question that I could like. Next, public hearing. Public hearing with FY 2015 budget. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium, say your first and last name, and your residence, for the record. We would like to duly recognize the mayor of the city of Lynn.
Thank you, my name is Judy Flanman Kennedy, every Saturday, 23 D C circle. Um, and you're speaking favor of this budget. It was a very, very tough budget to put together. Um, we were aware of the net school spending issues that the city has had to contend with. Um, nonetheless, we were able to do this without any layoffs of employees, we knew that one contract employee who is not going to renew. Um, but, we were able to increase the school's budget by almost 10% while cutting most of the other department budgets about 2%. Um, everybody's office supply budget by about 2, 10% to 15%. There were some departments that necessarily had to take a harder hit than others. In particular, um, the police and fire department were severely cut in terms of overtime and in terms of new vehicle purchase. The DPW was also cut in new vehicle purchases. Um, but, as I said, the budget at the very least preserves the jobs that we have here in the city. Um, and increases the school budget by almost 10%. And I will be around to answer any questions that the council might have, in the course of the rest of the discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. I open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. I close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion to approve by Council Luji, second by Council Net. Discussion. Council Ford.
May you can ask a quick question? I seem to be obsessed with the DPW tonight, I'm just, I'm really overwhelmed by the worst I've ever been on, with constituent services. I feel like we need more bodies. I can't keep up the treatments, I don't know what's happening with the budget, it's stopping now. How's one of you have any feelings down the road, if we'd be able to get some, I don't know.
I think part of our problem with the efficiency of DPW is efficiency, and not the number of bodies that are there. Because if you look back, I looked back while we were FY 2009. And the FY 2014 and the FY 2015 budgets both have, I believe, the 47 full-time employees. Those two figures are the highest in the last six or seven years. Now, as you know, we've had interim DPW commissioners for the last couple of years. Um, so I think part of the problem with the DPW's seeming inability to get to all of the, um, projects that have been requested of them is simply that you don't have, haven't had the consistent leadership at the top. We need to utilize those 47 bodies efficiently, and we've all met Andy Hall tonight, some of you have known Andy Hall, are watching him right now. And I'm completely confident that once Andy takes the helm, starting July 1st, DPW definitely will have, um, those backlogs taken care of. He is a hands-on administrator, and, um, as I said, it's not the lack of bodies that the DPW isn't, isn't getting the jobs done in the time we have.
Any further questions from there? Any further questions from there? Seeing no more questions from there, thank you. Any further questions? Council Sia.
I have one other question, uh, it's, um, fantasy. As a council, despite the most difficult time we've been across. Andy, you are no longer there. You know, like the city, the only military, like, who's fired, our schools, and, uh, you're the ones that say, in all favor of the budget, but also have concern for time. Except contract workers, uh, probably new, like, we, so, the city, I believe, we need, uh, as a friend, uh, to strike a dent, or as soon as I would be ready, or, or maybe a senior employee, uh, for England, who's probably going to lose their job. He's one of the few people who generates income for a city, uh, that's a good way, but, his parts are already caught up. The city's area locks up, and the hospitals have patients, things like, you know, the anxiety issue, crash, uh, hospital events, so, what else? Well, uh, Mr. Barris stated, he just recently sold his face, 700,000 euros, so, uh, I, you know, I just hope that we're able to find some way to put that person back. A lot of, uh, considering, I always argue that we cut a lot of, but, can't really see any reason to cut, you know. That being said, I asked, uh, for, for, to do that, because, uh, I'm also sort of saying, for the last, um, some years.
Thank you, Council Sia.
I will do it. Deal.
If there are any other questions, Council Luji. Any other questions from the council? Council Frey.
Surprised at you to the numbers, certainly recognize, uh, difficult budgetary stage, and also that we have a difficulty as a council. Too many differences, but, not able to spot this, obviously, because of, uh, crisis police, trying to DPW, uh, I could ask, uh, we do before the mayor. To address, uh, problems, uh, departments, absolutely, probably all.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing no further questions, follow up.
Council Baden, Council Kehoe.
Yes.
Yes, Council Pukana.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakoudas. Yes, Council Luji.
Yes.
Yes, Council Frey.
No.
No, Council Sia. Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Taman.
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
Well, here you sit down then, but.
We have two public hearings to be sent down, petition, Holyfield and churches, cause midway amusement, federal record, material, commission from, yes, Santayana, 26th best, 300,000, 89, Thursday and Friday, 6 to 10 p.m., Saturday, 12 to 10 p.m., in an ordinance amended, city of Lynn, Zon, which will reflect, like, this, this, this.
Council Sia.
For every motion, have a question, uh, publicly.
Boy. Michael Dunne, Mr. Dunne. Uh, motions to suspend the votes, made second, I wish to suspend it. Mr. Dunne.
We sent down a public hearing, uh, I choose to zone, uh, one.
We set down a public hearing, uh, chances are we're going to have to fight. We should have to, we should have to fight because it's a lot of council, a lot of law. Extremely impacted by that. It's actually because of the number of people that's done it and, you know, I have a will. And it seems that we won't get funding, but in a way that's set up, in a way that's irresponsible to people who set that map up. Because the spectacle of devastation that gets to our block, that area, it would be a swell of, you know, it might as well be small as that area. But then you imagine that people are now getting, so to increase the insurance. And so, you know, I'm going to make a motion to take this until the farmers, the house has time to reinvent this thing and set it up.
This, on July sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the community of Budmash is only affected. Communities in Massachusetts affected by these flood masts haven't until that date to adopt. If they know how to adopt these flood masts, then, one, nobody in that community will be allowed to have any flood insurance or planning. Two, people that want to get new flood insurance, new construction, maybe you only are, your insurance company requires them to get a permit to get insurance. And three, if there is a natural disaster, hurricane, flood, or snow that is requiring government assistance, you know, we'll not give any money to the city or the president. These flood masts, I've, I've drafted, they're moving properties that are on, there's no question that it's very drastic, but... There is no deal process within the regulations that can be taken on by the city or individuals to move forward without the masts in harm a lot of people within the city or businesses and value insurance in their pockets.
I'm going to ask Mr. Dunham to stay up. I'm asking him to monitor the work of the, for the board to show councils have questions. Counselor Seer.
I share Counselor Seer's concerns. And I think we're seeing adverse impacts as a result of these feeble provisions. However, I do recognize that this is a public hearing to be set down. And we'll have a lot of questions at that public hearing. And I would think that we would at least allow the public hearing to be set down. And then at that time, I'm sure we're going to have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns that need to be answered and responded to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Seer.
This wants to be a great one. The last ten years, I myself witnessed three, four hundred years' storms. I worked very closely with Counselors, Counselors Khan, and E. L. D. in extremely flooded areas. And not only was it three times a month a day a storm, but the wind has never stopped like a feed on the system in all those storms. And it was left up to the city to find ways to help these people. So that's why I have an issue with even giving us this deadline to go up some. They, they never give me any consideration. But the impact it's going to have, it's going to swindle people from their houses or, you know, the neighbor that this is going to impact in my life and as well as the council of farmers. Some of the oldest neighbors in the city, a lot of senior citizens who put the generation, were going to be extremely impacted. You just had a partisan cop getting a couple of stories going, agreeing with us. And said the partisan was working on some kind of fix. And he even said that wherever he came up along the road, it wasn't the right one. And he took everyone themselves to the roof. And I'm not saying the whole world, or what we're saying is that what she did, that's, you know, I know the public hearing is a time to, to do this discussion, but it doesn't give anybody enough time to work.
Bonn? Yeah. I went to a couple of those feeble hearings when they came near, the cops were direct. The forest people are paying for, and these people have built houses on the edge of the ocean, on a cliff, and a house of all's end. And, you know, these people stuff pay up, you know, millions of dollars, you know. The forest people around us, you know, are paying for it. They're being punished. And I think, huh, this is kind of work on trying, you know, trying to buy some relief. I, I wasn't very hopeful with, it was going to be much, but if they, on the hearing, we had a lot of these questions. I, I just like to be able to talk about it and all of that. Because in time, we have a little focus discussion on some of the issues surrounding these acts. Some of them, as I said, we got a puddle of pretty holes. We were a mile away, you know, including the subject of paying, paying insurance, flood insurance. So I think it's a beautiful, as I said, because it was time to really focus on this. And rather than, you know, these meetings at health, you know, at random times and places that not anyone would go to, to be able to have a one focus discussion here with the council and try to address some of the issues that the council is handling. I think you see it, you know, punished even more, you know, qualified for some of the potential funding that could be there because of this sort of flood disaster.
Counselor Seer.
Before we move to the hearing, I just wanted to, the entire council aware of problems that people are on a lot of basis. We need to raise a lot of abilities. Anybody that has any kind of water in their neighborhood or a farm, sort of circle of the ocean, you should look online. Try to get as much information as you can for this. The Seer, the council of farmers state that the forest people are not paying for this. They live in areas of buildings, moss houses, they have an ocean view. I've got people living on a lot, living a house, it's worth a hundred thousand, they're paying thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. It's kind of dull, it's not going to give you enough that people are paying sixty thousand, seventy, but two thousand over a lot. People want that, so I'm really nervous for that.
Counselor, if we had sent requests for someone from the feeble to be here present?
No. Feelings are made, they're clear, they're clear. They're going to send the best people here to tell us why we have to do it. And, you know, unfortunately, so the budget, you know, we hear a lot of the streets, but, you know, we see a lot of people coming here tonight talking they love or against it. So there are a lot of people looking, they, you know, sit down at Ricky Ford's place or at Gap or Pioneer, and they tell you they have concerns. That's what we have to address, they have concerns. And I know taking up some time, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, uh, the public hearing. That's all the different churches involved in that motion as well.
You want to take that with Fiesta?
Motion to approve that.
Motion to make, seconded, special, and seen that, roll call.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, ten, yes.
Counselor Seer.
I would like to request that, 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 the area, someone from the office of the town's office. He here that night, and maybe you sent an alarm, or she's been working. Or maybe she sent somebody from her office here that night, so they can actually, yeah, have concerns.
Absolutely. When Tuesday, the Senate, the House, the Senate meeting sessions, it would be the election from the offices. We will want to, issues be here present, let me pass it. And I know it's been a while, I have a problem with this issue sometimes, but we have, it's a balance. Any requests made from the feeble, you know?
Feeble bosses, I'm sorry, that's fine.
We put a request in, because I know there's been a lady trying to get us to approve this master September, which probably might fall away so late because I've been putting it off for the last possible day.
And it might, perhaps, all the years, I don't think it would be here too.
Absolutely.
I know he goes a lot about that, I'm sad, I wonder, discussing, so, I could have a bad spot and charge a certain amount. Any other?
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor. Unfinished business.
We have a couple of property, we want a June ten that laid over, one of the city-owned property. On Sunday's meeting, the base, the surprise, we don't have consideration for forty-two hundred dollars of stipulation that possibly used for landscaping and parking only. In addition to a motion to refer the bid receipt of property in the voice on the sound fifty-three, central after Myers Sullivan Lynn Rev. Trust, trustee and individual of the sum of hundred fifty thousand to review.
What's the motion to the council? Motion to approve, seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion regarding the RFP Sullivan bid for the community culture, seconded? Is this former Kevin's community culture?
All good. You decided, I decided, still decided.
Counselor Seer. Great. So Counselor looks to the fantastic job of doing RFP, Counselor Chukus, Mike Dunham, regarding the old friends' culture forum. And very happy and pleased to announce that a new restaurant will be coming to downtown, RFP Sullivan's. You can check their website, RFP Sullivan. And they're going to be a fantastic addition to the downtown. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, yes, yes.
The emergency, what type of motion? The report.
So what friends on the side, you, maybe a few?
Counselor, uh... We have to manage approval of a new development, the old windlumber, helping, uh, which I'm most proud of.
Because that is a separate board, there's no need for this, it needs to be in formal, the motions are all, for seconds. Thank you, Counselor. Good point. Ways and means?
Ways and means, I've got several items that I can bring them all together and do separately.
There are any objections? Seeing objections, we're bringing them all together, we're bringing them all together, we'll emergency at the end. Thank you. Okay, for your line.
I'd have the city controller take the following action. Transfer the sum of one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars and zero cents from the revolving waste can to an account of DPW's sanitation account. Appropriate the sum of eighty-nine thousand dollars and zero cents from the free cash to the flight back expense account. Transfer the sum of fifty-six thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents from the free cash account to legal expense account. Transfer the sum of seven hundred fifty dollars and zero cents from the reserve account of the collectives payroll account. Transfer the sum of thirty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents from the ISDH back expense account to the ISDN, pay bills for ideas. Transfer the sum of one dollar and zero cents from the reserve accounts of the licensed commission payroll account, certified and available from the amount of eighty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty cents as a lot to the city land lease department under the complement of the health and general diversion grant program, rank area four-two, fourteen to six-thirty-fifty. And an auto resolution of the governing body, the city of Lynn, authorizing the execution and delivery of the equipment lease slash purchase agreement with respect to the acquisition purchase monies and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents required in connection there with, and authorizing the taking of all interactions necessary to the confirmation of the transactions contemplated by this order's last resolution.
What's the motion to the council? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor, Counselor Seer.
The man's fault, I just couldn't, I'm going to call him, we're just going to give him time, just, I make a motion to approve.
There's a major debate, I can't say that, Counselor, again, thank you. Any discussion, seeing no, uh...
Counselor Fire, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, yes.
Now, the emergency, motion approved, who, and seconded, Counselor Khan, so, discussions seen done, roll call.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, and yes. Safety, following individual was appointed constable, Warren Nodell, that matters to Counselor Seer.
Counselor Seer. Motion made to approve, and seconded by Counselor Khan, especially, seeing no, roll call.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, and yes. Licenseing committee.
Counselor Khan.
The man's word was ready, much, so, I'm talking.
You seconded by Counselor Ford, any discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, and yes. Other property, embarrassed, believe, called it over to the line, right? We have a couple of items under community business.
Counselor Ozzy. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to the Garden Union Hospital if Madam Ford agrees with the motion.
If they have to have a recovery motion, then we'll entertain motions to, uh, second that.
I think the law, department and inspection services department, renew all special permits slash barriers issued to the properties which now accompany Union Hospital to determine whether any conditions have been violated with respect to the same and initiate any and all enforcement actions necessary to enforce said condition.
Motion made to approve, and seconded, Counselor Seer, discussion, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we're all aware of what is, what may transpire. And I think we're in unison at our last meeting, we held the Garden Union Hospital, that we agree it's not going to be good for the city of Lynn. We can't afford to lose the core medical services that they provide currently. And I don't want to take up too much time, but the motion speaks for itself. And I hope that you all support this and put, hopefully, we'll make some headway in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ozzy. Any further discussion? Counselor Seer, roll call.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, and yes. We have communication from Iran Mayor, the council's, assuming to be close, of the people parent are hereby recommending the city council accept the provisions of clause fifty-six of section five, chapter fifty-nine, be extended through fiscal year twenty sixteen and be effective through fiscal year twenty fifteen, sincerely do not plan to be pending.
I'd like to bring up Mr. Carr, who explained exactly what this is.
Yes, uh, clause fifty-six, uh, section five, chapter fifty-nine, uh, allows the assessors to, uh, exempt up to a hundred percent of the taxes on any serviceman who serves forty-five days or oversees either a national captain or regular service. The assessors can establish guidelines and, uh, on this. The, the problem is, we've had this in place for two years now. Uh, we've helped out a few servicemen. We, essentially, the assessors have adopted the policy of reducing anyone's taxes by fifty percent that serving overseas. The problem is, the statute has a sunset clause in it, which expires on June thirty. So we would not be able to give it to any additional servicemen starting with fiscal year fifteen. Plus, the council were to, uh, re-adopt it for another two-year period. So that's our intention, is to maintain what we already have. We've been able to help a number of servicemen already with their tax burden, while they served on active duty, and we'd like to be able to continue that assistance.
Counselor, come on.
Yes, I just like to say, Mr. Carr has been very obvious to finding these tax benefits to veterans and also keeping us up to date now. So I would like to make a motion to, uh...
Motion made to approve, and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing no roll call.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, ten, yes.
Counselor Khan, the most per emergency. Motion's having emergency, seconded, Counselor Seer, discussion, seeing no roll call.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, and yes.
First, I take off the table, six, please.
The motion to take off the table, six, Green Street, petition, enforcement, petition.
Uh, petition of Filomena's Kitchen, four-ten, four-ten Green Street. Uh, includes with section twelve, one of its own ordinance, established service for alcohol beverages in addition to food served. And the petition is named, Missy Warren Hill and Filomena Garcia.
Counselor, did you receive communication earlier today? And that communication said what?
We want to be cross, we want to be...
Target of the petition is your drawn petition. For the record, we need a, 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 roll call now. Roll, roll, which requires a roll call, please call the roll.
Counselor Barton, yes, Counselor Kehlis, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, Counselor Chukus, yes, Counselor Lucci, yes, Counselor Frank, yes, Counselor Seer, yes, Counselor Ford, yes, Counselor Ozzy, yes, Counselor Net, yes, Counselor Khan, yes, and yes.
No business. I would just like to remind everyone that the Fourth of July celebration will be July third. The City of Lynn fireworks begin partly nine p.m. The short ride will be closed approximately six-thirty. For further details of roll closures, please go to our city website. I wish you all very happy and safe Fourth of July. Hope you enjoy it, my Counselor Lucci, seconded by everyone. All those things they have, we'll have that.